Good evening. I'd like to call to order the August 11, 2010 Planning Commission meeting. Let the record show that all are present except Commissioner Dumas, Commissioner Slimon, and Commissioner Nance. And at this time I...
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to put the old business first.
Okay. Have a motion by Commissioner Barrow to amend the agenda to move the old business to the front, so that will now become item six. And then everything sub- subsequently behind it. And seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any objection? Motion carries. Okay. Acceptance of the minutes from the June 21, 2010 Special Planning Commission meeting. Have a motion...
Make a motion to accept minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Clouat, motion to accept. Seconded by Commissioner Marshon. Any objection? Motion carries. Acceptance of the minutes from the July 14, 2010 Planning Commission meeting.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Marshon to accept the minutes. Seconded by Commissioner Clouat. Any objection? Motion carries. Public comment period. Anyone in the audience wanting to comment on any item not on the agenda, please come forward and you'll have three minutes. I do have one announcement. I want to welcome Lindsey Amanda to... She's our new legal counsel. Welcome Lindsey. Appreciate you representing us. No one wishing to comment? Public comment period is closed. Okay. Item number six, old business, which would be the Powers Trailer and RV Park Site Planned Expansion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Jeff Burst and I represent the Powers RV and Trailer Park on tonight's agenda. It's come to my attention that some of the items we haven't fully addressed yet in our submittal. And with... And realizing that, I would respectfully request that our item be deferred till next month so we can fully address... Me with the staff and to fully address all of these items.
Okay. Have a request to defer for 30 days. I guess it's 30... Till next month's meeting, the Powers Trailer Park and RV Park. And I guess I need a motion to accept his request.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Dalton makes a motion to defer for 30 days. Seconded by Commissioner Barry. Any opposition? All right. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Burst. All right. So anyone in the audience here for the trailer park, just let everybody know it will be deferred until next month. Okay. Item 7A, the Elter Young Property Lots 1A1 and 1A2. It's a family partition.
James Falgu, representing the Treeck family, and the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, and corrected on the plat.
Commissioners have any comments at this time?
I've read your revised hardship letter. And I don't see any hardship there. Can you explain to me verbally what the hardship is and that the letter does not?
The hardship is that they want to build on the back piece of property and it's not fronting on a public road. And this is where, I guess... What am I trying to say? Put it this way. He's trying to, I guess, build the house back there. And he needs to put up land for collateral. And this is where the family designated to give him tract land. It's not fronting on a public road. This is the only way to divide the property to get the acreage needed.
Can we get the staff to comment on that?
The initial letter that went out with the packet that you guys all received was one that we had originally received. And since then... And that letter specifically didn't identify a hardship. It just... A family hardship. It just identified a building hardship. We... After the packets were all sent out, we received another updated hardship that basically explained that it's the... You should have received one in... You should have received one prior to the meeting and you also should have received one right at your desk before the meeting. And basically what staff was more concerned about is that the son would... That the family did have a need to have their son to build on the lot and that the son was actually going to build on the lot. And they... And we feel that they've addressed that in this new letter.
Any other comments, questions at this time? No other comments at this time? This time I open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment on this family partition, please come forward. Okay. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any other questions, comments by Commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll offer a motion to approve contingent upon the traffic comments being addressed to the satisfaction of staff.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marshon, seconded by Commissioner Dalton to approve with the condition that the traffic is addressed. Traffic question? Any opposition? Motion carries. Item 7B, Noel and Gomez Property Lots 2A EG1, 1C1 EG2, JN1, JN2, JN3. Family partition.
James Falgu, representing the Noel and the Gomez family, on the following family partition. Comments were made, addressed, and corrected on the plat.
I guess I'll ask staff rather than me trying to find where's the three-foot error. Tell me.
It's not.
It's not?
I've checked five or six times. I've had other people check it. There's no error. Enclosure.
Any comment?
No. That was a comment from our... The surveyor in the office. And we'll double-check that before the plat's signed.
Okay. Any questions, comments by Commissioners? No comments.
So comment number one here about staff in regards to the estate can maintain property in a family partition. Has that been addressed to our...
I spoke with Mr. Falgu, who directed me to the Noel's family attorney. To my knowledge, the staff has not received documentation that authorizes Mr. Gomez to make this application on behalf of the estate. I would simply recommend that you make your motion contingent upon receipt of those documents.
Okay.
And it all has to be done when the transfer of the property.
Any other comments at this time? If not, open up for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Comments, questions by Commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
I'll offer a motion to approve contingent upon comment one being addressed to satisfaction of staff and legal counsel.
Second.
A second.
Okay. Motion to approve by Commissioner Marshon, seconded by Commissioner Dalton to approve with the condition that comment number one is addressed. Any opposition? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item 7C, Carlos Marino Properties Lots 7A, 7B.
Good evening. Clint Quintmaul, representing WJ Quintmaul Surveyors, asking for planning commission approval on the following family partition of the subdivision of lots 7 in Manchak Hill
What about the mobile home on the residence?
Yeah. I spoke to my client and we discussed that in length. And that mobile home has been there for about 10 years. So he's going to do whatever it takes as far as cleaning up any paperwork or necessary occupancy permits in order to be acquired to, I guess, validate that mobile home at this location. Obviously, it meets density requirements as a family member. So he's going to do whatever's necessary to, I guess, validate that mobile home's occupancy there. Or either find out what... Where it went wrong or why there's no records.
Is that the same... The one that occupies the mobile home now? Is that the one that's going to be building in the back? The lot that he wants to give to the person and to his son in the back? Is that the same person?
No, I don't believe so. The gentleman who is moving the mobile home on the back 7B is here and it's not the same family member that lives in the existing one.
So there is a family member living exist... In that existing trailer right now?
Yes.
And it will remain there?
Yes.
Okay.
They're just going to clear up any permitting process.
Right.
That hasn't been done up to date. Obviously, the trailer's been there for 10 years and we're not quite sure why or how the situation, but they're going to clear that up before the final plat's signed.
So you're telling me that someone lives in that trailer now?
Yes. And has been living there for an extended period of time.
And that's a member of the family?
Yes.
It's his son, if I'm not mistaken. Am I correct?
I don't know the relation. I have... Yes, yes. It's a sister.
His sister?
Yes. The son is getting the... Anthony's getting the back piece.
Staff, exactly what would need to be done to clear up this... The records issue with the parish?
I think as far as we're concerned, we need to figure out if a permit was ever pulled to put that trailer on the property. And if it wasn't, if there's a way to get it all permitted and put there legally prior to this plat being signed. And if that can't occur, then obviously the trailer has to be removed prior to the plat being signed. So it's A or B. It's either going to get permitted and placed there legally or removed.
And you have a mechanism in place to enforce that?
We don't have to sign the plat.
But I'm just... This is kind of unusual situation, is why I'm asking.
Yeah. Yes.
Okay.
So you're saying the approval should be contingent on all of that paperwork being...
On A or B happening.
Any other comments at this time? If not, open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Any comments, questions? What is the wish of the commission?
I would move for approval contingent upon the permitting of the mobile home in question being cleared up. And if that's not doable, then for the mobile home to be removed.
I second that motion.
Okay. Have a motion to approve contingent on the paperwork follow-up with the mobile home that presently exists on the lot 7A. Seconded by Commissioner Clouat. Any opposition? Motion carries. Six... Oh, excuse me. Eight, it would be. 8A, Bluff Heritage Subdivision, Lot Number 12. Public hearing for servitude revocation. Hi.
Hi. Justin Champlain here for the purpose of requesting the commission to reduce and revoke a seven-and-a-half-foot side servitude to five foot on the eastern property line of
Questions, comments by Commissioners? No questions, comments? Open up the floor for public hearing. Anyone wishing to comment, please come forward. No one wishing to comment. Public hearing is closed. Questions, comments by Commissioners?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
In your heart... In your letter to the parish and your reason why you wanted to reduce the servitude, you stated that the subdivision ordinance states that you have a certain amount of square footage and...
Minimum requirements.
That you cannot build it with the servitude the way it is right now.
Right.
Okay. Lot Number 13 is basically the same thing. Has a home been put on that lot as well?
No.
So it's vacant too?
It's vacant.
So sooner or later, that lot's going to have to come back toward us and ask for...
Possibly.
Okay.
Unless...
But there's no home on that lot right on Lot Number 13?
No. None on 11 or 10 or 15.
Well, some of those are a little bit bigger.
Yeah. Well, I mean, you're right.
Yeah, some of them are a little bit bigger.
That whole side is empty.
They may be able to fit the 2,600 square foot. I think this gentleman doesn't have much choice. If the ordinance says he's got... I mean, the home... The subdivision rules say you've got to build 2,600 square foot space. And if he doesn't have the room to do that, I think he's in a bad shape right now. What is the developer... What did he say about it when this was all made up?
Well, I've talked to him and I... Of course, we discussed and I don't think that was anything he really anticipated whenever... Once he looked at it. You know, it was kind of after the fact thought.
Well, the point here is we don't get into subdivision rules and regulations. That's up to the developer and the people that are out there. So, I mean, to me, this would almost be something that the developer should have addressed a long time ago.
No.
I mean, we don't enforce subdivision regulations or anything like that.
We're not asking you to.
Well, apparently you are. You're saying you can't build because of that.
And we're asking...
And I'm submitting to you that we don't care what the subdivision regulations say. That's between you and the subdivision.
So my request is for the reduction of the servitude on the side.
Because of the 2,600-foot rule, which you're basically asking us to grant a variance on something that we don't enforce or regulate.
Right.
I don't think we can do that.
And we don't have any opposition, you know, to do that.
And I don't... But I don't think we can do that because that's not... The 2,600-foot rule for the subdivision is not something that this board is concerned with.
But I think I've made adequate, you know, provisions in order to address, you know, what has been requested here. You know, the request, you know, has been approved. I mean, the Department of Public Works has, you know...
I think you're missing my point.
Well, I understand.
My point is you're asking us to address a subdivision regulation that we don't have any control over. So I'm concerned... I'd like to get an opinion from our legal staff because I don't see where we want to get involved in anything like that. I mean, we don't care about the 2,600-foot rule. That's not a parish requirement.
Right. But you're absolutely correct. You wouldn't want to become involved in a civil matter between a landowner and the homeowners' association. But based on the information he provided, you could revoke the servitude if you chose. The commission would probably be setting a precedent at that point and it's entirely up to you all if you choose to revoke or to let it remain the same.
Well, I am concerned about setting precedent without giving it due study and...
Well, this thing... This development has gotten approval all the way through. It got a preliminary approval. It got a final approval. And our staff at that time, our engineer, looked at it. It met all the requirements. The developer... The developer was more than happy to get the commission's approval to build this. He got everything he wanted in accordance with the parish regulations and what he... This was the design he approved and it was the design that we agreed upon. And now, there's a problem. But it's... I agree. It's not our problem. It's... This is something that is between you as the purchaser of the lot in this... The development and the developer or the homeowners' association.
And I understand what you're saying. And I understand that you're concerned about precedent, you know, whether it's going to happen again. And I can't guarantee that the next person may not need to. I don't know. I don't know how long these lots are going to sell, you know, at the rate this, you know, it's going. But the... But I mean, it was clear in even in my letter I provided where it was Mr. Fairchild's statement, the understanding that, you know, responsibility for drainage, because it is a drainage servitude, you know, is to be the responsibility of... As the owner of Lot 12, which would be me. And I've stated in my letter that we would assume responsibility for any drainage problems that would occur. So the request for reduction has nothing, you know, at that point to affect the parish and actually benefits the parish.
I see where none of the utility companies in DPW objected.
Mm-hmm.
That is the last information and transactions you had between any of those is what you have... What we have right here?
Mm-hmm. Nothing further.
Is this the what you... The lot... The way the house is being situated on that lot, is there any other way you can switch it without giving up the part of the servitude? Because servitude is... Was really meant for a drainage servitude. And when we start giving recommendations to reduce servitudes and then we have a problem later, then this board too much catches some slack on it. Servitude is dedicated for a certain thing. And when we start changing the servitude...
With it... Right.
It becomes a problem. If there is a problem down the line, we have created that problem.
And I understand. But I'm willing to accept that responsibility for that problem.
And if you do have it, what would you do? How could you solve it if it required additional servitude to solve the problem? If your house is already there?
If the house is already there? I mean, the likelihood of that concrete pipe, you know, cracking, you know, if it does, it more than likely is because some vehicle rode, you know, big machinery, rode to drive across it. And if that was the case, it would still be my responsibility, wouldn't change anything to begin with. Or whoever caused the problem. It doesn't change anything. The matter is for drainage from the road as the storm drained to the pond, small ponds behind there, and for the road drainage. And it's not a long road to cause drainage to begin with.
Well, if this drainage servitude... Is the drainage a swell or is it... Or am I... If I heard you correctly, it's a enclosed pipe drain?
It's a closed pipe underneath the ground.
Okay.
It's a standard pipe that runs between...
Well, no. Some of them we have swell... Swell servitudes with drainage and stuff.
No, it's an underground pipe.
Okay.
Well, equipment that digs up pipe for whatever reason, I just... I think we're opening Pandora's box to reduce this because if that pipe ever has to be excavated or any work done, there's the house and...
Well, that's my responsibility.
Well, actually not. Then it'll become a really... A big legal mess we put the parish in because we reduced a drainage servitude. It would be the parish's problem because they've got to get in there and dig it up. You're certainly not going to dig it up.
Well, I'm saying I would.
I don't think that's enforceable.
I know you're concerned and I understand your concern. But it...
Yeah.
The likelihood of that concrete pipe, the way they make them nowadays, ever even need to be, you know, dug up is...
But that's why... That's why it was...
In the next 500 years. And even if the case, I know that there's technology in order to, you know, shoot fiberglass through the pipe in order to seal it as well.
Ms. Lindsey, may I ask you a question? If we grant this request to recommend to the council to reduce the servitude, what type of legal action would have to be taken so that the responsibility would be on the
Well, anytime you revoke a servitude, that'd be by ordinance. But I mean, there could be an agreement drafted between the parish and the homeowner. I mean, there are several avenues we could take. I've never dealt with this. Mr. Clouat, to be able to tell you offhand, so I'm afraid I don't have an answer.
Indemnification.
Typically, we don't have the applicant stating that they will accept the responsibility for it. We just get applicants that come in and say, "Well, I just want this servitude revoked because it's not being used," and that's pretty much it. But I still have to look at you... You bought the lot. I assume that you looked at the plat before you bought the lot and looked and saw what was there.
Well, that's been...
And so forth. So you bought it knowing that there... All that was there.
Not necessarily. When you look at it, the original plan map had lines, but the copies that were recorded in the courthouse did not provide the same lines in order to provide notice that there was a servitude on the side. And any information regarding that side servitude is actually listed on Lot 11 and not on the Lot 12. And actually, it doesn't show that there are any side servitudes or, you know, it doesn't even have the 15-foot drainage servitude on the rear because it's not even needed with the pond behind it.
Well, I'm looking at the plat and I can clearly read, as poor as this is, it says 7.5-foot servitude off of each lot and the error goes to both sides. I've read enough plats that this is not confusing or ambiguous to me under any conditions. I mean, it's very obvious that it's 15 feet wide.
What you're looking for, though.
Well...
Yeah. I mean, it makes a difference when you're looking for it and, you know...
Yeah. You missed it. But I'm saying, too bad.
Is there any other way that you can configure your home to where you would achieve the minimum standards of the subdivision ordinance and also achieve the seven-and-a-half-foot servitude by leaving it alone?
I've tried.
You tried?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've spent two months trying.
And there's no way... No way, shape, or form you can reconfigure it?
Not that I could find. And not that my, you know, the engineer that's doing the house plans could find without totally destroying it.
Did you go to the developer? Once you realized you had a minor problem here, well, major problem, whatever you want to call it, when you realized you had a problem here, did you go to the developer and question him about it?
Mm-hmm.
And what was his answer?
We've had two meetings.
What was his answer?
He said, "Well, that's, you know, that's the way I prepared and, you know, constructed lots without much..." Obviously, he didn't have much consideration about what was being done. You know, of course, at the time this was done was when... After Katrina.
So the 2,600 square feet restriction, was that by the developer or was that by the LLC after the homeowners was formed or...
With the developer is the same... Same company.
Still right now?
Yeah, still right now. I mean, in all generality, I mean, we're really looking at, you know, with the foot overhang, you know, from the side, you're really looking at a foot and a half difference from where the seven-and-a-half-foot would be. I mean, I couldn't build closer than six foot to the side to begin with. So it's a foot and a half difference is what it really ultimately comes down to.
Well, the overhang... Well, the overhang of the house has to be considered vertically for construction purposes, equipment and so forth. That's why we're very clear about that.
I'd like staff to comment on, on this particular item. Rick?
Once again, I'm, I'm not an architect, so I'm not going to argue whether or not the footprint that he has designed fits or doesn't fit. I would just make the argument that his building envelope is somewhere around 7,000 square feet. If you can't figure out how to fit a 2,600 footprint in 7,000 feet, perhaps you need a new design. But we're not in the business of making recommendations on servitudes or revocations because all the people who claim to it say they don't want it. And so if they don't want it, this office, we, we don't make a recommendation. The people who would use it don't want it, it's up to them. But a 7,000-square-foot building envelope seems more than sufficient to fit a 2,600 footprint building.
I agree.
The problem we have is the width and that's what it comes down to. It would completely destroy any plan. And that's been the biggest problem.
Any other comments, questions by commissioners? What is the wish of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that this be denied because I, I don't see any hardship here. I think he's got ample other opportunities to make good use of his land and I'm very concerned about setting a precedent in the subdivision and especially revoking a servitude where there's a pipe in existence underground.
I'll second that motion.
All right. Motion to deny the request by Commissioner Dalton, seconded by Commissioner Cluott. Anyone object? Our motion to deny is approved. Okay. Committee reports. Subdivision Ordinance Committee, Commissioner Sloman is not here. Let me go ahead and recognize. Ricky, I know if you were, were there, you may give the report. It's up to your prerogative, but either way, give a report on the master plan.
Okay. I do not wish to report on the subdivision subcommittee. We discussed many things and I don't have any notes, so I don't want to get anything wrong. We will meet again the last Friday of next month.
This month?
This month. And continue our agenda. But what I do want to announce is the public meeting schedule for the master plan. We've got 11 meetings scheduled. There's a commercial that's scrolling on Channel 21. We've got it on our Facebook and our website, but I just want to make the announcement. So on August 24th, oh, once again, these meetings are all from 6:30 to 8:30 in the evening and I'm going to give you the locations. On August 24th at the Lemon Center on the West Bank. On August 25th at the Pelican Point Clubhouse. On August 26th at the Darrow Community Center. On August 30th at the Old Prairieville Fire Department on 73. On August 31st at Galvez Middle School. On September 1st at Santa Mal Recreation Park. On September 7th at the Dutch Town Library. On September 9th at the Lake Elementary School. On September 13th at the Ascension Courthouse East. On September 14th at Central Primary School. On September 15th at the Oak Grove Community Center. And then our special meeting of the Planning Commission will be on September 20th back here at the courthouse.
Okay, thank you. And I encourage everyone to make one or two of these meetings if at all possible, especially the ones that are in your district. Coming down to the final phases of this master plan and obviously we encourage everybody to be as educated on it as possible. Thank you, Ricky. And at this time, item, whatever it is.
Motion.
Have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, we are adjourned for five minutes and then we'll reconvene as a joint planning and zoning commission.